Okay, at six PM, we'll call our meeting order. Let's move to the legion.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please, Marine.
Mr. Cranes?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mrs. Hett?
Here.
Mr. Beer?
Here.
Mr. Bembel?
Here.
Thank you, Marine. First item on our agenda tonight is the presentation of the Board of Education order, but that has been postponed until January of 2021, so we'll do that next month. Next item is our student representative report. Rachel, how are you tonight?
Oh, good.
Good.
So, as we have moved into December a lot more, things have been happening. Student Council and many other student groups were actually able to purchase three additional water bottle fillers to go throughout the school, throughout Lincoln. I know one is going down into the PAC, which is very needed because we've only had the, um, you know, the normal bubbler that you can't fill your water bottle, and it's a pain in the butt. But I believe the district also purchased two more to kind of match some of what the other additional funds. Something exciting that happened in student council, Amelia Marty, our sophomore class president, was elected Region Two president for the Wisconsin Association of School Councils, so that's very exciting. Community candles, our goal for our, uh, for Lincoln is 3,000. Student Council donated $200 and passed on an ice bucket challenge to Decca, who then matched and passed it on. And we have a bunch of concerts happening, band orchestra and our community holiday concert, and I believe all of them are going to be live streamed. If you want to tune in.
Awesome. Thank you, Rachel. Next item is the approval of the minutes.
I move that the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of November 9th, 2020 be approved as printed.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting of November 9th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Those minutes are approved. Next item is comments from citizens and delegations. Should we have anything, Marine?
No.
Thank you. Next, we move into committee reports. I'll be giving the Ed Services Committee this month. We met on December 7th. There was no public comment. We have 21 consent agenda items. Does anybody want anything held out? Okay, the first one is approve course history through media for one-half credit, elective course at Lincoln High School for grades 11 and 12 to begin in the 21, 22 school year. The second one is to approve the transcripted credit course introduction to diversity studies for one-half elective credit at LHS for grades 11 and 12 to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Third, approve course American History in Depth for half elective credit at Lincoln for 10th grade A push students as well as 11th and 12th grade students who have completed their LHS American History requirement to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number four, approve course America's Voice for one-half social studies credit and one-half PLA credit at LHS for 10th grade A push students as well as students who have completed their LHS American History requirement to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number five, approve course America's Story for one-half social studies credit at LHS to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Six, approve the course Health, Safety and Nutrition Blended for a one-half Family and Consumer Sciences MSTC transcripted credit at LHS to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number seven, approve the course Physics One or Conceptual Physics for one-half science credit at LHS to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number eight, approve the course Astronomy for one-half science credit at LHS to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number nine, approve the course Topics in Physical Science for one-half science credit at LHS to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number 10, approve the course Topics in Life Science for one-half science credit at LHS to begin in the 21, 22 school year. 11, approve the course PLTW Biomedical Science Human Body Systems for one science credit at LHS to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number 12, approve the course Environmental Science One for one-half science credit at LHS to begin in the 20, 21, 22 school year. 13, approve the course Name Change of Comprehensive Natural Science Chemistry Biology A to Chemistry One to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number 14, approve the course Name Change of Principles of Chemistry to Chemistry Two to begin in the 21, 22 school year. 15, approve the course Name Change of Chemistry Applications to Chemistry Three to begin in the 21, 22 school year. 16, approve the course Name Change of CNS 10B to Microbiology to begin in the 21, 22 school year. 17, approve the course Name Change of Principles of Biology to Macrophiology to begin in the 21, 22 school year. 18, approve the course Name Change of Principle of Environment to Environmental Science Two to begin in the 21, 22 school year. 19, approve the course Name Change of Comprehensive Natural Science Physics Earth Science B to Earth Structure and Processes to begin in the 21, 22 school year. Number 20, approve the prerequisite change for explorations from getting, attempting Algebra One before taking Geometry and attempting Algebra One and Geometry prior to taking explorations to instead pass Algebra One before taking Geometry and pass Algebra One and attempt Geometry prior to taking explorations. And lastly, 21, approve the WRPS Handbook of Special Education Systematic Requirements and Procedures. Committee recommends that I move approval of ES1 through ES21.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve those 21 consent agenda items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Those are approved. Then we had some updates. Virtual student enrollment numbers, Roxanne Filts pointed out that enrollment numbers were provided for both the end of the first trimester as well as the beginning of trimester two. Administration thought there could be noticeable changes but found there really weren't. It was agreed that administration does not need to present numbers at the January Ed Services meeting since the winter break falls between now and then. Second update was our school and district report card. Because the enactment of the 2019 Wisconsin Act 185 and the ESEA waiver granted by the Department of Education, no state or federal academic assessments were required for the 2019, 2020, and 2020, 21 school years. Third update, ESER funds. Roxanne explained that the information provided in Attachment D that we received reflects to date what has been budgeted for from CARES Act dollars. The total public allocation is $744,799.87. Total per pio allocation is $50,232.13. Not all funds have been spent yet, but all funds have been budgeted at this time. It was also noted that Legacy Foundation provided all the masks, T-shirts, and washers and dryers. With that, committee recommends that I move approval of the meeting minutes of the Educational Services Committee meeting of December 7th, 2020.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Educational Services Committee of December 7th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Move on to Business Services. John?
Thank you, John. Business Services met on December 7th, and our meeting was called order at 6:44. We had no public comment. Out of our meeting, we have three consent agenda items, and we, there didn't even want anything held out. Okay, hearing none. The first one was BS1, was a request for funding by the Boys and Girls Club in the amount of $55,000 for four years to continue the partnership we had with, as far as Club MEAD. If you recall, Club MEAD was done at MEAD Elementary when the Boys and Girls Club was over in the pitch building, but now that they have this nice facility within distance on the west side of town, they've moved all of that Club MEAD program over to the actual MEAD building, which improves their ability to offer more services, more things for the kids to do. They have more room, they have more space. And the other thing it does for the school district is it allows us to use some fundating funds since this is now a community activity or activity, Boys and Girls Club. So, motion was made, and second, in that we propose funding of $55,000 for four years for the Boys and Girls Club, Club MEAD partnership program be recommended. BS2, we have our HVAC air filter purchase, and we had three bidders, and the winner actually is a WRPS in our district, and actually lives in Wisconsin Rapids and has children in our school district. Air filtration specialist at a total cost of $19,426.65 was recommended for approval on the bid one. Then our last is a hand towel purchase, which we probably hadn't had in the past. There was a motion made, and second, in that we proposed purchase of the hand towels from Masco at a total cost of $14,000 for recommendation. At $14,000 is at 500 cases. That's how many hand towels it weighs. With that, committee recommends that I move approval of BS1 through BS3.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve BS1, 2, and 3. We have a roll call, please, Marine.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
The balance, we did have some purchase update, a copy of our Police and Liaison Services. We had Dan's last report of the audited financial statements and the report of communication for the government's management advisory. Out of the report, Dan pointed out multiple things, and he did it fairly quick, so it was surprising. He did have a couple of his, I don't know why I checked that, and then he figured it out and remembered it for us. And the bottom line is, is the report was very good, and again, that's, uh, had only one fault, and it's the fault we have every year because we don't do our own books. So, that is always noted that it's a fault, which I think is backwards because it shouldn't be noted, but that's what they do, and that's the only fault we had is that we don't have our own accounting firm, and that we use the accounting firm that we use. And with that, I do have another meeting I need to talk about before we approve minutes. We had a special business services meeting on December 8th. That was called at 4 o'clock. And the purpose of this meeting was to interview construction firms to select a company to recommend in preparation of the referendum technically anticipated for April 2021. The reason we have to choose a construction manager now is because part of it is for planning. Along with that is for referendum help as far as pre-referendum and referendum communications and engagement, as well providing construction management services for successful completion of projects under the referendum. It should be noted that we do not pay any fees unless the referendum passes. So, anything that is being done by this firm that we chose happens, they don't get paid until the actual firm that happens, the construction, the shelves, the sand, as it say. Interviews, we had four candidates, company CG Smith, Fendorf, Kraus Anderson, and Myron Construction. After the presentations, we had a brief discussion with Steve Keighley, which is our architect from Plunkett, Raysh, Raysh's architects. Again, it was noted in district internal cost. The committee expressed, uh, expressed appreciation for all information shared by each of the construction firms. After lengthy discussion, we made a decision to recommend Myron Construction for the board. So, out of the meeting, we do recommend Myron as the construction management firm to be approved tonight in preparation of the referendum tentatively anticipated for April 2021. Ultimately, if only the board takes action to move forward with the referendum. Meeting was adjourned at 7:44. So, with that, I would like to approve the meeting minutes of December 7th and also the meeting minutes of December 8th.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the regular committee meeting minutes of December 7th and the special committee meeting minutes of December 8th for the Business Services Committee. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you, John. Next, we move to Personnel Services. Sandy?
Personnel Services met on December 7th. From that meeting, we had no consent agenda, or we had no public comment, but we had eleven consent agenda items, and they are as follows. One, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one nonrepresented staff appointment, and this person is taking the place of Mr. Jaworski that's been with us for quite a while. Two, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff appointment, and that is a new position at Grove School. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the three support staff resignations. And then we have lots of board policies. We have eight policies. Some are for second reading, two are for second reading, and the others are first reading. And a lot of this has to do with Title IX. Number four, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 447.11, Use of Seclusion and Physical Restraint with Students, and Board Policy 447.11, Use of Seclusion and Physical Restraint with Students Exhibit for Second Reading. I've just said, we have the new Title IX regulations, and the new regulations require the following: Identification of the Title IX Coordinator, the district's response when it has actual knowledge of an incident or allegation under Title IX, specific grievance processes, proper notice of Title IX, employee training and record keeping, and the following policies all address those that we have to do. Five, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 411.11, Sexual Harassment and Non-Discrimination in District Programs, Activities, and Operations for First Reading. Six, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 411.11 Rule 1, Procedure for District Response to Alleged Sexual Harassment Under Title IX for First Reading. Seven, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 411.11 Rule 2, Expectations for Employees to Report Discrimination and Harassment for First Reading. Eight, the committee recommends and I move to approve Administrative Guidelines for First Reading. Nine, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 411, Student Non-Discrimination and Anti-Harassment for First Reading. Ten, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 511, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity for First Reading. And finally, the committee recommends and I move to approve Board Policy 511.5, Employee Anti-Harassment for First Reading. Maybe you don't want anything held out?
Second, yes. So, many of you friends, and I move approval of ES1 through ES11. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
And with that, I move that the minutes of the meeting be approved as printed, and we adjourned at 7:10 PM.
Second, we have a motion, a second, to approve the meeting minutes of the Personnel Service Committee of December 7th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And then I move to approve the committee meeting minutes of November 16th, 2020 of the open and closed sessions.
Second, we have a motion, a second, to approve the special Personnel Services Committee meeting, open and closed session, meeting minutes of November 16th, 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Thank you, Sandy. Next item is Agenda Referrals Information Request. Do we have anything this month? We can move on to the legislative agenda. Troy, what's new?
So, this month, we have a couple of things to take a look at at the state level, a couple of DPI requests to take a look at, as well as the legislative committees are being rounded out in the last couple of weeks, as well as looking at some proposals from both sides of the legislative branches and then response from the executive branch in the governor's office. So, I'll start with the DPI submitting their budget request for 21 through 23. State Superintendent Carolyn Stanford Taylor has submitted the DPI budget request for funding public schools and libraries from 2021 to 2023. This marks the official beginning of the budget process for public schools, and this request will set the marker that the governor will work from in proposing his budget early next year. Outlined in the press release, priority areas mentioned include funding two-thirds of school costs, increasing mental health funding and services, boosting the ability for schools to better serve students with the greatest needs, removing GED testing fees, and further supporting the state's public library services. This recent budget request submitted completes the overall DPI proposal, going back to the first piece that was submitted in September. Next, Governor Evers announces a virtual budget listening session. He has four total as they begin the 2021 through 23 budget process on various topics. The session focusing on education will be held this Wednesday night at 6:00 PM, and links to register are available on the governor's website to attend the People's Budget and Education Session. Moving to leadership positions within the legislature, all four legislative caucuses have selected their leaders for the upcoming legislative session that begins in January. As I talked about last month, the Senate GOP was the only caucus to see major changes as Devin Le Mahieu was elected Majority Leader and Chris Kapanga was elected President of that caucus. And Janet Bealy, Robin Voss, and Gordon Heinz have all retained their leadership positions going into this next session. Howard Markline was appointed as co-chair of the powerful Joint Finance Committee in terms of budget rating out of that appointment. That will take effect in January when the rest of the legislature is sworn in. On November 17th, Governor Evers released details of a legislative package addressing COVID-19, which included two provisions strongly supported by WASP. The first was calling for waivers for state assessments and report cards for the 2020, 21 school year, and the second was allowing the rehiring of retired teachers and staff and the ability to reinstate their licensing through the end of 2021. According to wispolitics.com, these are two of 19 total proposals from the governor that were shared with legislative leadership. And later that same afternoon, Robin Voss had rolled out the Assembly Republicans' response after Evers released his proposals earlier that day. Looking at a school perspective, WASP is pleased with some aspects, including limited liability protections for schools, businesses, and entities acting in good faith. Other ideas mentioned by Voss include beefing up contact tracing, the call for more rapid testing, developing at-home testing, and moving around state agency employees to assist in needed areas. Robin Voss also stressed his preference to use federal CARES Act dollars instead of state money to fund their overall efforts in their package. The Senate and Assembly Democrats on the other side announced some appointments. Senate Minority Leader Janet Bealy has announced she will reappoint the two senators serving on the Joint Finance Committee. And in terms of the, on the assembly side of things, the reappointment of one and the new member, Greta Newbauer, will be joining that committee, replacing Chris Taylor, who did not run again. Now, turning to WASP resolutions, the report to membership on proposed 2021 WASP resolutions is available on the website. This report presents the resolutions that were advanced by the Policy and Resolutions Committee and will be considered by the Delegate Assembly. This year will be held in a virtual format on Wednesday, January 20th. WASP sent a long letter on behalf of Governor Evers, thanking him for his support of school boards and local control in terms of dealing with reopening and how to address the overall pandemic. He sent, John Ashley, Executive Director of WASP, sent Governor Evers a letter thanking him for his decision-making and the approach that school boards and administrators are doing the best job they can and understand the difficult decisions that their own community faces and their own community understands those circumstances. Now, moving on to the Department of Administration. As required by statute, the Department of Administration submitted its November 20th summary of budget requests for the 2021, 23 through 23 biennium, along with the state tax revenue estimates for the remainder of the 2021 fiscal year and the following two fiscal years after that. Looking at analysis, the summary's bottom line, taking into account even with a healthy $1.2 billion ending balance to finish the current biennium, and looking at modest new revenue growth, the state would face a $1.2 billion deficit if every agency request was approved as submitted, which it's unlikely for that to be approved as a whole. A couple more things to look at in the legislature. Robin Voss and Assembly Republicans announced their legislative package to address this pandemic. Just looking at the school-related provisions, they did, they did roll out a couple of them that WASP has come out in support of, some of them not. In terms of the provisions that were listed, they look to establish limited liability for schools, businesses, and local governments. Also mentioned is reestablishing personal electronic computing device grants for schools, require teacher instruction from buildings by the end of January, and require school board approval of virtual instructions by two-thirds vote. And in terms of a response to that, WASP's executive director came out and said, "We cannot support a state-mandated approach that imposes arbitrary deadlines and limits the ability for local school boards to respond to local circumstances." According to multiple reports, the Senate will not come in to take up any COVID relief legislation in the month of December, so this effectively kicks the can to the new, to January, when the new legislature will be sworn in. Couple more appointments to look at on the assembly side. Robin Voss has appointed Mark Born as co-chair of the Joint Finance Committee, replacing John Nygren, who abruptly resigned recently of his seat. And in terms of Howard Markline as chair, Dewey Strobel was named Vice Chair of the Joint Finance Committee as well in the Senate. Governor Evers has two upcoming speeches of interest. The upcoming State of the State Address is Tuesday, January 12th, and his biennial budget message is Tuesday, February 16th. And this year, both of those will be delivered virtually. And the last, the last piece to mention is that State Senator Alberta Darling of River Hills has been appointed the new Chair of the Senate Committee on Education, succeeding retiring Luther Olson. And this announcement came in part of the overall release on committee structure for the upcoming legislative session. And that takes us into January.
Well, thank you, Troy. We'll see if they show up to work anymore. Okay, next item on our agenda is bills.
I move that the receipt be noted and the bills be printed as paid, paid as printed.
We have a motion, a second, that receipts be noted and the bills paid as printed. Can we have a roll call, please, Marine?
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Hett?
Yes.
Mr. Beer?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Thank you, Marine. Next item, unfinished old business update on potential future levy override and bond issue referendum questions.
Yeah, so, I think the bulk of this conversation will be centered around Sue from School Perceptions, going through a presentation here that we have that they've created for us. A small group of us already went through this. But Sue, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
They are ready for you, and they can see your screen.
All right. Well, that's two for two. Good work on that. My assignment tonight is to go through the results of that community survey. Just a reminder at who we are. We're School Perceptions. We've been doing this work since 2002, and our mission really is to help educational leaders like yourselves gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. And we've done this work for probably more than 700 school districts as they navigate the referendum process. So, we conducted your survey in November of this year. All residents within the district were mailed that eight-page paper survey. That survey has a one-time-use unique access code on it that works with our proprietary website. You had 2,660 people respond to the survey. Of those, 1,007 mailed back a paper survey to our home office in Slinger, Wisconsin, and we've got folks that key those in. So, again, a nice response rate is there. We asked folks to take the survey to tell us a bit about themselves. The reason for this is we want to be able to correlate your data with what happens in a typical election. So, the first thing we do is we ask people to tell us their age. This is really what we want the demographic data to look like. Why is that? We typically will see in the school district election, less than 3% of those who vote are in that 18 to 25-year-old age group, so. are in that 18- to 25-year-old age group, so sitting at 2% is just fine. Then we know that parents of school-aged kids sit in that 36- to 45- to 55-year-old age group. And we also know that those friends over the age of 65 never miss a chance to vote. So we want to make sure that that 65-and-older group is actually overrepresented statistically compared to your community, and indeed, at 26% they are. We want to see that above 16%. So that data looks real good there. We asked folks to tell us what municipality it is that they reside in. Again, the goal is to be able to correlate this with what happens in your typical school district election. So as you can see here, 41% of those who responded to the survey live within the city of Wisconsin Rapids. And then you see the percentages there that make up the other municipalities. We asked folks to tell us if their primary residence was within the school district. That gives them voting rights on a school referendum. 92% of those who responded to the survey live within the school district. 8% reported that they do not. You're saying to yourself, who would that 8% be? That would likely be school district employees that worked for you but don't live in the district. Additionally, we allowed all parents to respond to the survey, and you'll have some parents that boundary in or a secondary home, so a non-primary custody parent that could have responded but doesn't live within the school district. We'll remove non-resident respondents as I move forward, so you'll hear me talk only about resident respondents in a bit. Then we asked folks if they worked for the school district. 18% of those who responded to the survey reported that they worked for the school district. 82% said they did not. 45% of those who responded to the survey reported that they have children attending school in the district. We asked folks if you've got those school-aged kids, what school or schools do they attend? 41% reported that they have someone at the high school, 29% at your middle school, and then you see a small percentage there at either your elementary schools or making other educational choices for their kids. Again, this allows you, if you want, to be able to pull the data apart on the back end through our portal and just look at parents at one of the particular schools, you have the ability to do that. We asked one question regarding communications. How would you like to receive information regarding the school district? This is good information for you to have as a district, whether you choose to go to referendum or not. And as you can see here, this time, we've separated the data into two groups, that of parents that don't work for the district and then general citizens, the group we refer to as your non-parent, non-staff. As you can see, your parents are saying, "We appreciate getting emails, newsletters, utilizing that Skyward family access, as well as mailing." Your general citizens are saying, "We look to print news," so the Wisconsin Rapids Tribune, The City Times, as well as your school mailings as primary ways to find out what's happening in the school system. Then we asked a couple of questions about the satisfaction of the school district. I like to call this the pulse of the people. And the reason that we want to ask these questions is we know that there's a direct correlation between if people think that the district is doing a good job and their likelihood of opening their wallets and saying, "I'm willing to pay more in taxes to support the school through a referendum." So this is the first time, you'll see, we've separated the data into three mutually exclusive groups. That first column there, those are school district employees. The second column, our parents that don't work for the district. If I happen to be a parent that's also an employee, my data only shows up once, and we put it in the staff category. The third column, that's the most important group, those are your general citizens. They don't work for the district and they don't have kids attending school in your district. So again, they just make up the majority of the community. The number that you're going to see here is a simple average. If everyone has said great, you'd see a four. If they said poor, you would see a one. So we've ranked ordered the statements according to that furthest group, those general citizens. And again, really, the community is saying the district's doing a nice job, delivering a high-quality educational experience, preparing suits for life after high school, and building pride in the community, all leaning towards that great, the good. So the only thing we ever say, if you pause and say things are falling below a 2.5, you want to kind of poke at those, but really at a 2.45 and 2.43, nothing to be concerned about. So definitely, citizens are telling you, "You're doing a nice job in your school." One overall satisfaction question, and again, we can see here that 75% of your community is giving you a nod that they are certainly either satisfied or very satisfied with the work of the school district. The survey had its two purposes. One was to educate your community. The second was to gather data. So we wanted to let folks know that really, as a board and as a school system, you've been working hard to be good fiscal stewards of dollars and that your taxes are the lowest that they have been in recent memory. We also wanted to make sure people knew that there's really two types of school district referendum and that those dollars can be used for only specific things. So the daily operations would be that operational referendum, and then if we were going to address facility needs, that would be done through a capital referendum. So we identified some needs that the district had with an operating referendum. We were proposing for five years to really look at curriculum making, some updates, ensuring that we've got the technology and systems in place to provide the best education for your students at a cost of $2 million annually to address those needs. And we said to folks, "Would you support a $2 million operational referendum for those technology and curriculum updates for each of the next five years?" And so what we found was that 65% of residents said, "Yes, they would indeed support that." 22% no, and 13% undecided. However, when we look at your data, I don't want you to just focus on all resident respondents. And the reason for that is that all of the people that responded to the survey, the data is overrepresented of school district employees and parents of school-aged kids. So what I mean by that is that more parents than school district employees statistically responded to the survey than what would happen in a typical school district election. So to make sense of this, what I mean is that if I was sitting outside of a polling place at a typical school district election, and as people left the polls, I asked them two questions. I said, "Excuse me, do you work for the school district?" What I would find out is about 1% of the people that leave the polls would answer yes to that question, that they work for the school district. So 99% of the voters don't work for the school district. Then if I asked the question, "Do you have children attending school in the Rapids School District?", what I would find out is about 25% of the people that go to the polls would answer yes to that question, meaning that 75% of the people would answer no to both questions. So therefore, it's important that we pull the data apart and we look at each of those groups separately. So again, school district employees, they make up that 1% of folks at the polls. You can see here, highly supportive, with 89% saying that they would support that referendum, 6% no, and 5% undecided. While they make up 1% of the folks at the polls, they have a very important voice in your community because your school district employees are having all kinds of informal conversations with residents in your community all the time. So it's important we know where they stand. However, it's the next two slides that really determine what happens at an election. So 25% of the folks that go to the polls are in this category, your parents, residents, with 73% showing support, 15% no, and 12% undecided. These folks here, those general citizens, remember, they make up 75% of the folks at the polls. So this slide really determines what will happen in an election. 52% are showing support, 34% saying no, and 14% undecided. So again, we really look at this previous slide here of those parents and then those general citizens. And if you're following along or thinking about fifth-grade math, you think, "Well, we've got 52% support from 75% of the community, those general citizens. You had 73% support from 25% of the community for those parents." And so if we remember the order of operations and we do the math, you're really sitting at about 57, 58% support for that operating referendum. People also ask, "Well, what happens to those folks that said they were undecided?" And so as we go back and look at the data, you can see that 14% of your general citizens reported that they were undecided, 12% of those parents. Our research has shown over the years that about a third of undecided folks moved to a yes. Two-thirds are just too nice to tell us no right away. So if you pick up a third of those undecided folks, you see that you'll really have a bump there from that 57% up to 61% support, which tells us that indeed, it does make sense to move forward with an operating referendum, and you likely would have success. Then we wanted folks to know that there were some facility projects that the district was considering, and that those included dealing with some improved school security. We let folks know really what that would look like, that there was a need to redesign the main entrances at all of the schools, as well as do some reconfiguring of school offices to make sure that we would reroute visitors through those main offices before they'd have access to students. So all in, that was going to cost $12.74 million. And we said to folks, "Okay, is that something that we should consider on that capital or facility referendum to address those needs?" So that blue bar represents all residents. You can see 59% are saying yes, 27% no, and 14% undecided. But given the lesson I just taught, we really want to focus again, not on the blue bar, but look at that data in those three mutually exclusive groups, with focusing that attention on those purple people, that non-parent, non-staff, and that green bar, that's your parents. So again, if we did the math and you set 75, 25% weighting that I just talked about, you can see you've got majority support, so 52% support there for that safety, the safety and security entrances, 33% saying, "No, I'm not sure that's something that we should consider." So again, that looks like you've got good support there. We also identified some needs for updates at Lincoln High School, and we knew that there were some updates to science classrooms and labs and what that would look like, so $9.93 million there, updating your library media center and creating a student resource center. So we said all in, we needed $16.66 million to address those needs at the high school. Again, you can see 55% of all residents that responded to the survey were giving a thumbs up or supporting that, 26% no, and 19% undecided. But again, if we kind of use that math and focus our attention on those two important groups, the green and the purple people, you can see are just below majority support there at the high school with that 48.25% support, and 33% again pausing and saying, "Yeah, I don't know if this is something that we should do." And now you can see that 21 and 18% undecided. So again, you'll pick up a third of those folks, which tells us you'll hit above that 50% as far as support for those type of updates. We also knew that there was a need to add a gym at Think Academy, or at least is desired to do that, that would create a separate space for your gym and cafeteria. This would cost $4.6 million. And we said to folks, "What do you think of this?" So this is the first time we really see in these three different projects that we've presented, that folks are saying, "No, I'm not sure that this is something we want to invest in." Again, you've got 34% support from those two groups, 44% saying, "I'm not sure this is something we're interested in," and then that 23 and 24% reporting that they're undecided. So again, you pick up another 8% of folks that would likely say it's something that they would support, but you've got a leaning at this point on that Think Academy gym more towards a no than a yes. But it really does come down to one thing, always does, comes down to money. And so when we look at those three projects, when we kind of created the survey in those three areas, all in, $34 million in projects and facility projects for the district, and we wanted folks to know that the district is retiring some debt. So again, the survey had an opportunity to educate folks on the fact that as that debt is dropping off, and we would look at that referendum for operating as well as taking on $34 million in new debt, we can do that with no tax increase over where we currently are, and we're lower than where we've been over the last couple of years. So when we presented this, as well as letting folks know that really, this is an ideal time with interest rates at those historic lows and construction costs really competitive, you can see that 57% of all your resident respondents are saying that they give a thumbs up to both the $2 million operating and that $34 million capital referendum, 29% telling us no, and 14% undecided. As we break that data apart again, strong support remains from your staff with 82% supporting it, 7% no, and 11% undecided. It's these last two slides that are the most important. So 66% of your parents, residents, are supporting both of the referendum, 20% no, 14% undecided. Again, you'll pick up another 4, 5% of those undecideds will move to a yes, so you can say you're sitting closer to 70% support from your parents and then your general citizens. 42% support, 43% no, and 15% undecided. Again, pick up 5% of those folks, so you're really sitting closer to 47% support from those general citizens for both of the referendum, looking at the whole $34 million. So if we put that into the equation, what does that look like? Look at 42% support from that 33% of the community, 66% support from those parents that make up 25% of voters. So you're sitting at, just at the bubble there, that 48% support. And again, assuming we carry a third of those undecideds, which our research over the years has shown that you would, you're sitting right at just under that 53% support. So what does that tell us? You've certainly got support for both referendum questions. If we think back to the projects that were presented within the $34 million bond, there might be a conversation about that gym that seems like that maybe has less support, that citizens may have some questions, and we saw that in the comments, and I'll talk about those in a second, as far as the number of students and the use of Think Academy. So you've got some decisions to make, at either going all in and working really hard, making sure that your supporters get out to vote, or perhaps adjusting that plan and thinking differently about the when of the Think Academy gym. So with that, I'll pause. I think Steve's on the phone as well from PRA, if he wants to add anything. Craig, if you want to add anything, or I'll take questions.
I don't have anything to add, but is there anything for Sue, as long as we have her on the line?
We did have a discussion that we, John Cranes had brought up, that he had a call from some of, a couple citizens, and I've also... from some of, a couple citizens, and I've also talked to a couple citizens, and now they've said the same things, that they are confused because we had Think Academy, which was called Rudolph Elementary. People are now thinking that it's a specialized school and not part of the school district. So some of them misunderstand that it's still part of our elementary program and part of our buildings, and they were answering no to questions on the referendum because they didn't think it was an actual school district building and they didn't want to spend money on it. So we're going to have to, I think we figured out that we're going to have to definitely clear that up and make sure that they understand Think Academy is definitely our elementary school in our district.
And we do, as a reminder, have kind of a work session scheduled for Monday, December 21st, where we can get into the nuance of, well, give yourselves a week to kind of digest the information that Sue has shared, and then get into the nuance, because we have access to the database that Sue is referencing, where we can, you know, pair out and refine and see information from how Rudolph, Vesper, and that area responded, how other areas responded, how certain age groups responded, so we can spend some time on really articulating that Monday. I'm not saying we can't discuss it out, so I mean, certainly if you have questions you want to discuss, feel free. But that's absolutely one of the aspects of what we should engage in, which is, here's what we asked, here's what we heard, so now what should we do? And one of the options would be, of course, to, as Sue mentioned, maybe rework the question and remove the Think Academy gym, and try, you know, the inclusion of maybe some other minor projects that would be a little more palatable, paving, parking lots, or something along those lines. Or is the question to keep the gym in for Think Academy-Rudolph and, you know, work on a communication campaign and information around educating the public about all those aspects. So there's a number of different things, of course, that we can consider, and the whole goal of doing this exercise and evaluating the data is to help us better refine and identify what direction you folks all feel comfortable moving forward. So it's a, I think it gives us the information we need to make some decisions, although I'm going to say I don't think they're easy decisions. You know, I mean, everything we do, there's going to be work involved with and associated communication campaign and, you know, all those other aspects, which clearly is always part of asking the referendum question. So it's just our comfort level and the direction we feel is the most prudent or most reasonable based on the data we have.
I think another big part is, how do we educate the public that we can do these things without raising tax bills?
Yep.
Because, you know, the biggest group of people are the senior citizens that are living on fixed income, and obviously taxes are a major concern. And if we can educate them, then we can do these projects without their tax bill going up. Why would you not be in favor of that?
Correct. And one of the other aspects, too, is school perceptions in the process of categorizing the comments. So for most of these questions, there was a comment area, and from those comments, you can, you can, you know, kind of divine some feedback that might not be as explicitly stated in just a quick yes, no, or undecided sort of vibe. And one of the aspects, I think, that you would not be surprised to know would be commentary around the reversal closure and what that means economically for the community. And I think that's one of those aspects that there's, you know, there's no two ways about it, that's a, that's a big hit, and that is a huge deal. But on the same hand, timing is everything with respect to, you know, our current circumstance and other circumstances as well, where when you take on additional debt, or when you can levy additional dollars from the community and not modify the mill rate to the local levy a huge degree, it's very important that we consider that and ask those questions, even understanding that that circumstance is fairly significant for the community. So there's those aspects, there's aspects of what you indicated about Think Academy and Rudolph Elementary. You know, there's aspects of commentary about even confusion on why you would have to modify school entrances when we already have visitor control, visitor access, right? And so just communication on those topics. I think in a survey that somebody's supposed to read and answer questions, it's quite clear you can't communicate every nuance and detail, otherwise they'd be reading for far too long to even answer the questions, right? And only a couple of schools were shown, for example, with the entrance modifications, just to give people an idea, but the question was then, well, you know, aren't we already doing this at schools? And the answer that's yes, but we're not diverting individuals coming immediately to the office. They basically, most buildings have access to sometimes the middle of the building, and they have to walk, you know, maybe fifty meters or so to get to the office, or they have to cross a large open hall or a commons area. So those are aspects that we would have to, you know, educate the community on. Similarly, there's questions about, you know, just general operations, the operational referendum, the override. What do you mean curriculum? What kind of curriculum are you talking about? What technology? How, what about these smart boards that we bought, you know, a while ago? So those are all aspects that you can see contained in the commentary, that commentary would place in the buckets for us to more easily analyze and work with that kind of information. But those two, in conjunction with this data, will help us kind of move in a direction of what route we want to go. And how do we base our education campaign and our communication plan with the community if in fact we do move forward with one or both of these questions? So by the time we're done on Monday evening, I'm pretty confident you're going to be very comfortable with, here's what we want to do, and here's what we need to do to make that happen. I have every confidence that that's going to be the case, so.
Okay. So we have no action necessary then on that tonight?
There would not need to be any action, no.
Okay.
Is there any other questions for Sue or school perceptions while they're on the line? Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Yep, let us know if you need anything. Have a good night.
You as well.
Okay, next item under unfinished old business is a motion to approve business service committee recommendation to select Myron Construction as the construction management firm in the event the board approves moving forward with a referendum in April. We needed to do that as well as we did it in the business services?
Well, the business services was minutes only, the content of that meeting, and then this would be requesting action to officially hire them as the construction manager.
I will make a motion to approve the recommendation of business services to select Myron Construction as the construction management firm in the event the board approves moving forward with a referendum in April 2021.
Second.
They have a motion, a second, to approve the business services committee recommendation to select Myron Construction as the construction management firm in the event the board approves moving forward with a referendum in April 2021. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Myron has been selected. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you, everybody. Looking forward to working with you again. I'd also point out, I think it's relevant, and this information, of course, is available, that Myron is, has a past relationship with the district number one, number two, also according to the calculations that we received from our architect, is one of the lowest in terms of fees when it's all said and done, which I think is important to taxpayers. And of course, the delineation in some cases might be several hundred dollars, but nonetheless, they're quite competitive with regard to their overall fee structure. But I think that's relevant for folks to know.
There's an error in the sheet that needs to be corrected, too, before the final copy. So, if you want. He figured, he calculated everything else, all the other CGS, PNF, KAT, at thirty-plus, but he calculated Myron's at twenty to thirty. So that's got to be corrected, so one point seven five should be one point six five, if he's going to have an apple, an apple calculation, or he's going to have to change all of his other ones to twenty to thirty, so that you're talking an apple from apple from the biz. That's all thirty plus, thirty plus, thirty plus, that one was twenty plus. So this is twenty plus, that would be twenty plus for that, twenty plus for that, and twenty plus for that. So he just needs to change this, and then they're all equal.
Which would actually make it lower.
Would make it lower, yes.
So there isn't concern around a miscalculation of the fee structure because it was actually miscalculated higher, according to John, should we end at one point six five versus one point seven five?
Right.
That's that far right-hand column that you see there. And Steve Keke for our architect is the individual that developed this matrix. Excuse me. So what I'll do is get on the phone, and prior to Monday, we'll get this updated, or if it doesn't require an update, I'll explain why that is. Fair enough?
Very good. Okay, the fifth item, new business, the site may possible action on employee employment's resignation and retirement request. Brian, you think?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. B, update will be provided by Nexus on district energy efficiency projects.
Hello.
Hi, Jeff.
See all of you again in person. It won't be long. I see most of you, if not all of you, have the project summary in front of you, and feel free to ask me any questions that you have. But suffice it to say that Nexus is winding down on a three- to four-year relationship with the district, and during this time, we accomplished more than thirty million dollars in school building improvements. We've got about a hundred thousand dollars left in contingency, and I don't think we'll have any problem in spending that. The work's already been identified, and I believe they're going out for bids shortly. Any questions at all on the information contained in here? You know, one of the nice things I want to point out is the solar array, and it's too bad that's not somewhat visible from the street, because I don't think a lot of people know it's up there, but you can see from that photograph that it is a pretty sizable field of solar panels. So, you know, the only thing I can think of is that maybe we put a kiosk downstairs for people to take a look at the information about the savings that are produced by those panels. But anyways, it's just emblematic of all the improvements we made, that most of which, not all of them, saved energy for the district. So on behalf of Nexus, we'd like to thank you for the opportunity to have worked with Wisconsin Rapids Public Schools, and we look forward to the possibility of working with you again in the future.
And for reference, just to, because we are, of course, based in the topic, Jeff, but the, in general, there's been, every, every one of our buildings that house kids in particular has been touched with energy efficiency upgrades, including HVAC, lighting, the significant projects at Lincoln and some of the projects at Rams to facilitate the closure of East and then the re-selling kids ninth grade over to Lincoln and then put over to Rams. And a lot of those things were accomplished under, in addition to our ability to capture energy savings dollars, because these things haven't been touched for years and years and years.
Right. And we were able to accomplish the work under budget and on time, with the budget, under-budget dollars being put back into the facilities to do, to accomplish additional work. So, you know, thirty million dollars of improvements, you know, around energy efficient equipment is, is pretty significant.
I think the other two things that people don't realize, don't see in the building is, one, is the air handling units. I mean, this dinosaur over here, the amount of energy it took just to run it, much less, you know, how inefficiently big the air and everything else, and how efficient the new ones are, and then the other one is people don't understand the lighting. You know, they look at a light bulb, but they don't know how much you're saving, because that went from a forest into an LED. And those are the two things that people, you know, if we do do a kiosk, people think we want to hit that along with that and the solar, to show people what we're actually saving on these, in these buildings.
Another thing to acknowledge is that, while these result in significant energy savings, they also result in operational savings, because you don't have to replace the lights as often.
And everybody knows simple things like windows. Expensive, but simple. You put new windows in, you know, a very old building, you still recoup, pardon me, some energy savings just as a result of doing that. And oh, by the way, they can open and stuff, too, which is kind of nice when you've got kids in buildings, so.
All right. Well, thank you for the partnership. I look forward to seeing you again.
Thanks, Jeff.
Hey, IMC, action to approve required annual school violence drills conducted by each building and reported by building principals.
This is simply our statutory obligation to let you know we do school violence drills, and we got the documentation that goes along with that.
I want to make a motion to approve the annual school violence event drill reports emitted by each building principal for drills conducted in accordance with Wisconsin statute 1807, parent's four, parent's CP.
Second.
They have a motion, a second, to approve the annual school violence event drill reports emitted by each building principal for drills conducted in accordance with Wisconsin statute 118.07, parent's four, and CP. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Next item, discussion and possible action to approve tentative agreement reached with custodial and maintenance employee group.
So what you have before you and via the Personnel Services Committee is a settlement with our custodial and maintenance group. Just as a reminder, they failed to recertify as a union, so moving forward, they're not going to be recognized as a union, but frankly, the way we interact and how we engage as far as conversations about, you know, potential modifications to things like wage and so forth, we'll have, we'll continue to have those conversations. We have a great relationship with our custodial and maintenance group, for sure. Good people, and they do great work. Nonetheless, the action tonight would be for a one point eight percent increase, and that is a range on their base wage, ranging from as little as, I believe it's sixteen cents or something like that per hour, up to forty-eight or forty-six cents per hour, depending upon what the base wage is that we're talking about.
With that, I would motion to approve of the tentative agreement reached with the custodial and maintenance employee group.
Second.
They have a motion, a second, to approve the tentative agreement reached with the custodial and maintenance employee group. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries. Move on to E. Approve tentative agreement reached with the Wisconsin Rapids Education Association collective bargaining.
Yep, and in a similar manner, negotiations committee met with the teachers' union, and through subsequent conversation have recommended a eight hundred and seventy dollar per teacher, per FTE, prorated for FTE annually. And the new hires for this year would be insulated from that modification, because as a reminder, we adjusted base from forty thousand to forty-one five for bachelors and from forty-five thousand to forty-six five for masters, and so therefore they are insulated from that modification. But in general, it's eight hundred and seventy dollars per professional staff member, per teacher, per year, prorated based on their FTE.
I would motion to approve of the tentative agreement reached with the Wisconsin Rapids Education Association WREA collective bargaining group.
Second.
They have a motion, a second, to approve the tentative agreement reached with the Wisconsin Rapids Education Association collective bargaining group. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries.
And I should have mentioned, too, that's reflective of one point eight percent.
Yes.
CP.
And that is retroactive.
That's correct.
Okay. Last item tonight is discussion and possible action to approve a legacy foundation grant agreement and affiliated fundraising campaign to upgrade existing athletic facilities at Lincoln High School by constructing two baseball diamonds, two softball diamonds, and a concession stand with wrestling rooms.
Right, so I sent you some information from the legacy grant, including some of the grant slash donation expectations and circumstances, as well as some pages from a fundraising website that we anticipate to go live here relatively shortly, of course, depending upon board action of the agreement, on the grant agreement, pardon me. But to kind of give you the background and understanding of why this is even a thing that we're talking about. So prior to my arrival here, there was some conversations around multiple phases over updates to Lincoln High School. One of the phases has been completed, which has to do with the pool in the gymnastics and wrestling room area. That was in process upon my arrival here. In addition to that, there was, and again, this was just, you know, this wasn't like, here's what we're going to do, it was kind of a, here's what we'd really like to do with this Lincoln High School property. One aspect of that was a baseball softball complex, another aspect was a very nice dome turf practice facility, and then a rework of Southwood County 2000, which would include renovated track, and then updating that playing surface from grass to a football field. And there is a very interested group of community members who, upon touring Lincoln High School with Ron, when the renovations were complete, engaged him in some discussions about, hey, have you thought about, and these would be groups involved with baseball softball primarily. have you thought about, and these would be groups involved with baseball softball primarily, have you thought about maybe partnering with our groups and getting some baseball softball fields put on the Lincoln High School property? And to that, Ron said, well, no, we hadn't contemplated that. That's kind of a good idea. Anyway, right around when I arrived here, three and a half years ago, we were in some preliminary conversations about whether or not we court the legacy foundation, other foundations, potentially the community, over this broad, all encompassing project, which totaled somewhere in the neighborhood of eighteen million dollars, which of course is a very large chunk of change. And one of the aspects of why this would even be something you would contemplate as a school, as a high school, or as a school district, has everything to do with those community partnerships and community connections and being a solid community resource and very little to do with the fact that, oh, we need a turf baseball field to have baseball because everybody knows that that's not true. You also don't need a dome turf practice facility in order to have athletics at Lincoln High School because one of the questions that you'd be asked, which is, you didn't need it before, why do you need it now? And I have a tendency to agree with that. But one of the aspects that I think this brings, and through these conversations, one of the aspects that this brings in whole or in part, is not only this collaboration around community user groups, but the ability for Lincoln High School in Wisconsin Rapids to be a site to host multi-team, multi-sport events that bring people and dollars into the community for the time that they're here. Doing things like playing a baseball tournament, softball tournament, soccer tournament, football, wherever the case may be, and that might be youth, it might be adult, it might be both. And in all likelihood, it would be both. So the conversation then and subsequent initial legacy grant application with some community user groups, because one of the pieces that legacy looks for is community partnerships among multiple groups and collaboration. We did a grant application a couple of years ago, now, yeah, it would be good, two years ago, around a potential grant for getting us down the path of this entire eighteen million dollar project. And what we found was that there just wasn't going to be the horsepower around a dollar a month of that size at the time, including the legacy grant potential. And so what we did was modify that, that approach slightly and ferreted out into this baseball softball quadplex because if you recall, the group that approached the district on the front end was baseball softball groups that were interested in that specific aspect of the project. So we wrote the grant request yet again, and in those conversations, that's what ultimately gave rise to the grant award that you see here before you, in addition to some of these, you know, renderings and schematics and site drawings and so forth. You also recall that we did spend a little bit of money, about, I think it was eighteen grand, to get that site ready with site surveying and site prep, along with a twenty five thousand dollar grant from Legacy Foundation to cover the total cost of making that happen. And so fast forward to where you are tonight, and that is the culmination of all those things kind of coming together with this core group of individuals that is still very interested in moving this forward, that is courting organizations for things like in-kind donations, as well as for naming right and marketing opportunities, in addition to, let's just call it grassroots fundraising. And all of those things are going to happen in kind of a simultaneous fashion. The estimated cost of the baseball softball quadplex, which includes a concession stand and some associated facilities, is about six point eight million dollars. And the legacy grant donation covers a significant portion of that, well over two-thirds. And the nice thing about that is you're not at a starting point where you're saying, listen, community and businesses, we're looking for six million of a six point eight million dollar project. We're looking to make up a gap that I think is very surmountable. The district's role in that process, as it stands right now, would be the land and the management and ownership of the facility after it was built. And long-term, very clearly, when you have things on your property, if you don't have decent policy and MOUs and governance of said property, it can become a liability, which is what we intend to do, is develop policy and MOU understandings with our local groups, as well as similarly to the PAC or the Washington Soccer Fields or the REC Center. We have evidence of these things right here in our own community where we can, you know, create circumstances in which it's not going to be necessarily a moneymaker when we're talking about using it with our, our local user groups, but it should be sustainable, generating dollars that we can put back into the property itself for maintenance and upkeep. Where the potential for additional revenue comes in is when you're able to sell, rent the space, pardon me, to organizations that are interested in playing softball, baseball tournaments, or soccer tournaments and fees to attend and so forth and so on. And as you well know from also living here in Rapids, bringing people to town for things like sporting events draws a lot of people and draws a lot of money, not during a pandemic, but it absolutely does. All of these things that we're talking about are things that could happen. That's not lost on me. But as a parent with three kids, who has now most of the kind of time passed, the athletic tourism is what I call it, this is what you do. You go to a place to watch your kid play soccer, baseball, basketball, football, wherever the case may be, and when you're waiting two or three hours in between, you're not usually going to a big shopping mall and buying things. You're going to go, you're going to run to Walmart, you're going to go get some food, you might put some gas in your car, you're going to chit chat with, you know, maybe have a, maybe have a drink, a non-alcoholic drink at a local venue and then head back. I'm just talking about myself, I'm just talking about myself. You go back to a venue and then, you know, you spend the day there and you might, you might stay in a hotel, you might not, but that is absolutely bringing people to town to spend their dollars here. Now, long-term investments and massive economic stimulus, no, but that's not what we're potentially selling with regard to this circumstance. That being said, when all things are said and done and we're talking about bidding this project, the quadplex now and associated facilities, what we see is that we're going to need to come up with considerably about 1.2 million dollars, we're hoping more in the terms of two, or even two and a half, or three, and I'll get to why that is in just a second. But the 1.2 that we'd need to fully fund the project would come in terms of, we're anticipating seven hundred thousand in in-kind contribution, so that would be made known via the bidding process. I'll do the dirt work for you, all we're going to charge you is for my people. Or I'll do the dirt work for you, all we're going to charge you for is the equipment rental, you know, whatever. And that will be shown then in the bidding process. We'll do the power to this building and the lights and, you know, the walkway lights, okay, that'll be shown in my bid. And anyway, point being is that through that bidding process, we hope to see that we can, when I say we now, I'm talking about the Legacy Foundation, the community groups in the school district, can realize about seven hundred thousand in both in-kind and cost avoidance measures. I'll give you a quick example, de-watering is an example. So we're running utilities, water, sewer, electric. If you don't have to de-water, that's a hundred fifty thousand, I believe, estimate that we could save, quote unquote, save on the front end, but you're not spending. So there's some of those cost avoidance measures that can be, that can be put into places as well. We have courted the city of Wisconsin Rapids to potentially work with us in terms of bringing in the sanitary water and sewer and power and stubbing it out there because of course there's nothing out there in that, that site. For those of you that need to orient yourself, we're talking kind of, if you're facing Lincoln High School to the right and behind the football field, that open area back there is really what we're talking about. So through that process, we hope to, as I indicate, get about seven hundred thousand in in-kind contributions and cost avoidance, which leaves about five hundred thousand, excuse me, I'm choking myself, I do this every time, it's got to be a mess. And now my eyes are watering. Which leaves about five hundred thousand raised locally in terms of things like naming rights and advertising and marketing opportunities and just some ma and pop, you know, Craig and Sunshine Rowan writing a check for a hundred bucks or five hundred bucks or a thousand bucks, whatever the case may be. We add that up over time and our hope is that we get two hundred six point eight million dollar total. And as you hear me talking, we're talking about a lot of money, no doubt, but we're also talking about, I think, doable increments of dollars, which will only become known when we actually get our bids and start to see locally what we're talking in terms of in-kind and some of these other things starting to take shape. So then, through that conversation, which you'll notice is also included in some of the information from the Legacy Foundation, was a separate yet conjoined conversation around our football field, Southwood County Two Thousand, and the renovation of our track. So our track has twenty plus years on its lifespan. If you were out there most recently for the socially distanced graduation, there are aspects of the track that are not good, that are really not good. And that track needs to be taken care of and we're in the process of determining if it's a full reconstruction or, I can't remember what it's called. Basically, they, they grind it up, tamp it down, and then lay, overlay, overlay and redo.
Mill and overlay.
Mill and overlay, thank you.
No problem.
So, you know, a total redo is a little bit more expensive than a mill and overlay, but nonetheless, it's going to cost somewhere in the neighborhood of a half million to eight hundred thousand bucks to make that happen. One of my things that I will tell you as a former track coach, track's expensive when you're talking about building and maintaining a track, but track is not expensive when you have a track. Because all you need is kids with the shoes and parents buy the shoes, right? So, and that's a little bit of a joke because there's other expenses, but I'm oversimplifying. The problem is, is that if you have a track, it needs to be functional and usable. One of the things that Rapids does very well is host a number of track events, you know, invitationals and so forth, and lo and behold, that brings people to town. But even if it didn't, we have a track program, we need a track. So through that conversation and track renovation, which we'll talk about, you know, in the future when we get bids on that, is a very generous donor who chooses to remain anonymous currently, he said, well, I'll give you a half million dollars to put turf on the football field when you're doing that. So that was not part of this approach necessarily, but you can see how organically over time some conversations have been had. Individuals that are quite generous and have some, you know, attitudes with regard to what they'd like to see and how they'd like to see it, have come forward and made that note, which is why then you see some additional language around, hey, by the way, if you're interested, you could also do a donation for naming rights and, or just a straight donation to turf the football field, which is estimated at about a million bucks. And so that means we're about half the way there. If the turf, if the funding for the turf doesn't come through in terms of additional donations, in-kind, cost avoids, all these other things, then that's not going to happen. Because once again, the aspect around, we need turf to have football or soccer, that is not, I don't think any school district can say that. You do not need it because we can play football right now, we can play soccer right now, right? That's an excellent segue into the final commentary and then I'll open it up to questions. The final commentary is, why would you want to do turf anyway? And the reason behind that is the multifunctional use of the facility. With baseball and softball, it's quite simple. As it stands, the goal would be to do turf infields of all of those fields, and if there's dollars available, we would turf the entire field, the outfield as well. And I'll get into some specifics about why that is. For those of you that have played baseball or softball, or coached it or have been involved, you know full well that when a group A leaves the baseball or softball diamond, it's not the way it needs to be when you're going to play on it. So then your group's got to get the baseball or softball diamond reworked and restriked and so forth and so on. And then there's these, I'm not going to call them fights, but let's just call it, you know, the ins and outs of having fields and certain individuals may not follow up on doing their thing and then you're stuck, okay, blah, blah, blah. So one of the things it does for you is basically, we walk off, you walk out. You're done, now we play. And there's very little prep in between, if any. The other piece that I think is very relevant to what we're talking about in terms of potentially bringing interested parties to town, is the idea of utilizing the turf areas in a multifunctional capacity. So if you do have a fully turfed baseball and softball field, you can also strike those for youth soccer, and by the way, if your football field's turf, that can be a couple of different youth soccer fields. And lo and behold, you can play soccer all day on the fields. It doesn't matter if it's raining, it doesn't matter if it's super cold or super hot, but you can play. And then when you're done, you can change it back and play baseball, softball, or football on the same field with very little transition time. As it stands right now on a grass field, what happens is, and that's why soccer doesn't play on Southwood County Two Thousand, that's why practice doesn't occur on Southwood County Two Thousand, is because when you get to the end of a fall football season or about midway through, it rains a few times and lo and behold, you got, you know, some mud on your field and clearly you don't want to have athletics out there, or you don't want to run it into the ground so that your last game is on dirt and stones. So the turf aspect of it is all about the multifunctional capability and the multifunctional use of the facility as a whole, and not about, oh, our programs need to play on turf. Because I'll say it once again, if you talk with people that play sports as a profession, most aren't going to say, I prefer playing on turf. You're going to hear the opposite. But you also are going to hear things about, like Rhinelander as an example, putting in turf, and Marshfield locally, putting in turf on their football field, and Amherst.
Rhinelander put in a dome.
Dome, and Amherst putting in turf. And DC Everest was one of the first school districts in the state to turf their football field twenty-ish years ago, and so forth. And the reason behind that is not because, well, in some cases, it's because it's cool and up and coming and it makes it stand out, but at this stage, it's not really about it anymore. It's really about the multifunctional use and the ability that it can be used nearly twelve months a year and almost around the clock. There is cost differential for turf versus natural surface. In general, it costs significantly more to have turf installed than it does natural surface. Long-term, you talk about some replacement of turf, particularly like on baseball, softball, you're going to have to replace like the first baseline as an example, because whatever's used most, that in a lot of cases has to be replaced before the other aspects. So you do have some of those replacement costs. But in a general sense, maintenance and upkeep on an annual basis, if you're not talking about the upfront cost, it's actually slightly less to have turf than it is to have grass because of mowing, watering, aerating, fertilizing and so forth. But you'll say, total nonsense, because I can mow my grass once a week or twice a week and put some water on it, it's just fine, and I don't have to fertilize it and so forth and so on, and that's true. So that is based on how it's taken care of and how it's maintained. Our football field as an example, you guys go out there on like the opening Friday night, if it's a decent late summer and into fall, which most of them have been, and it is like thick lush green carpet. It's fantastic. Our guys do a great job with maintenance and upkeep, pardon me, and they do keep that field maintained very well, overseeding and reseeding and bringing in sod when necessary and so forth. And so if you're going to maintain it in that regard, there is, and I'm not selling this as a cost savings because long-term, you've got to take a cost to install as well, but it isn't as though having turf costs you way more on an annual basis. Installation, yes, but maintenance, no, on an annual basis than natural grass. So that's my lone diatribe about saying, I get that this is a unique project, I get that this is not something that necessarily is where the school district needs to make it happen, but being a contributing member and part of the community around this, this project, I think is a great opportunity, and I think it's absolutely a surmountable opportunity that we have before us. And it'd be really cool.
I do remember when the Raptors group first came forward, the Witter Field was used for Lincoln High School and Legion ball. And when they first came in, that had an impact on the use that those other teams could have because, you know, they had the field first. And over the years, as much as they fixed up Witter Field, I'm guessing, just from the high school perspective and the Legion, to have something like this in the high school's backyard, kids can get out of school and walk out there instead of driving across town. You know, the Raptors are trying to hold practices, they're trying to get ready for games. I think it clears it up a great deal. Witter Field's a nice place to play, but it's also being used by semi-professional, you know, organization, so makes a lot of sense to develop that land around Lincoln High School for high school use.
And there would be, as you, as you mentioned, you know, user agreements around allowing access for local schools at a rate that is not ridiculous, that's totally, you know, doable, but also is sustainable. And Lincoln High School would not be, you know, like the Lord, I mean, we'd be the Lord and Keeper with regard to, it's our property, but very clearly, we'd have to develop a kind of a use, a usage schedule and associated, you know, supplementary documentation. Because much like, you know, anything else with the PAC as an example, if there's something that the PAC is being used for, it's not like our high school theater program can go in and kick them out, right? But our high school theater program, on the same hand, can use it. And it's all about identifying, you know, schedules and user agreements and relationships, and so that's, that's the intended plan for something like this if it were to take shape as well.
One other thing I think to be noted is, the track probably had a life of about ten to twelve years and we've, two patches and been resurfacing a little bit, have extended it out to twenty, but that's basically got to be a project that's got to be done no matter what. So if you're going to redo a track and take all that time to remill or whatever we plan to do and not do the football field then, basically redoing the track and leaving the football field, when you come in and do turf, you're going to have all kinds of construction material on the brand new track.
And you don't want to do that.
And you don't want to do that, so.
So you might as well say you're not going to turf the field for twenty years.
They kind of got to do, yeah, they kind of got to go hand in hand, you're going to be doing the projects together.
Or you would align it with some Or you would align it with some kind of maintenance where you know you're gonna jack around with the surface of the track.
Right, yeah.
Seems like a good project. Big thank you to the Legacy Group that funds these kind of projects, that's awesome.
So I have to make a motion?
No, wait, wait, is there time for questions? I've been waiting.
I talked too long, that's the problem.
Okay, I'm certainly, first of all, having trouble with the date. If we look at 4A, it says we need the full 1.2 million by March 15th committed. But then we're talking about, the matching grant has timeline from 12/20 to 11/21 to get the 1 million, what are the two?
Yeah, so I talked to Mike Bobey, the executive director, about that. Maureen and I noticed that as well. And the dates that we're talking about are flexible with regard to that initial disbursement. So if that can't transpire on March 15th, that can be pushed. One thing that they wanna do is do dispersment one in this fiscal year and dispersment two in the next fiscal year. So if we can accommodate that, there's flexibility with regard to that timeline. The fundraising timeline basically says you can start that immediately and as soon as you have the dollars, we're ready to do the match. That's how you can interpret that.
So we need to get our ducks in a row and get 500,000 dollars. Are these other partners gonna help us, like our other two school districts? It looks like it's all shouldered on WRPS.
The majority of it is yes, but we do have very active groups that have been involved from the beginning. I can't speak to or tell assumption what they're gonna do, nor Port Edwards or anybody else, but I know there's interest and I know that, you know, people will come to the table as they feel appropriate.
Okay, we were saying that the track has to be replaced. There were looking at 800,000 dollars. That's just district money, has this been budgeted?
Well, I would have to circle back with Dan around our facilities plan, but I can almost guarantee that the idea of the track having to be redone is, has been on the agenda for the last few years. I mean, it's not a mystery to me that the track needs to be taken care of.
But I mean, that's a huge chunk to.
We do have funds in Fund 48, oh, 46.
Is the track mentioned in that?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Probably not, but it's something, that plan can be updated by the board at any point in time.
I think it's in there.
I think it is as well.
I thought it was in Fund 46.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna misspeak and claim that it wasn't, it wasn't, but.
Okay, so let's just say for argument's sake, if we didn't have the money to do the track, you know, we just don't have the money, would this whole thing fall apart?
That potential exists, yes. Yep. Because part of the, part of the, part of the grant, I'm not gonna say is contingent, but the push is to make these things happen kind of in a simultaneous fashion because of the perceived economic impact with, for all of the reasons that I outlined. And, you know, I think, I think the aspect that's most attractive is to do the renovations and maintenance or updates, pardon me, in kind of a simultaneous manner to increase the multifunctional use. The issue with the track, the problem that I have to emphasize is you would see that before you whether this grant was here or not, because it was just this, if it wasn't for having graduation out there, well, I would've been out there probably for spring track season. But if it wasn't for having graduation out there, there's areas that, I mean, the track has to be redone in order for it to be safe. We could probably get through this spring, but that's about it. And clearly, there's other things that we can and need to spend money on, but here again, we got a track and we have a track program and the community uses the track and it's getting to the point where it needs to be redone. So frankly, if it just sits the way it is, the track would need to be redone. If not this spring, next for sure. So to me, it was a foregone conclusion around getting that track taken care of.
And then we're looking at, what, about a million dollars for football turf?
Correct.
And 500,000. So we would need to, on top of the other, another 500,000 dollars for turf. And it just says we agreed to make an attempt. So if we could not get that extra money and we cannot go ahead with the turf, we're still gonna be able to do this legacy grant?
Yes. The football field aspect is separate, but they also wanted to incentivize and assist us in community fundraising around that topic.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, I think this is fantastic, it's wonderful, but I just think there's, I had questions and I think, you know, if other people ask me, I wanna be able to have the answer.
Oh, guaranteed, yeah, absolutely.
So I think that's, that's it. Other things would all be in an MOU, right? For example, some of these organizations, when they get together, they have alcohol?
Yep.
And I don't know what it is on school property, we usually don't.
Yep, so we pulled the information that we have for the rec center and the hockey circumstance. And one would argue, it depends upon how you're leasing it and who's leasing it and what they're leasing it for. But we do have evidence that it would be possible. Whether or not we wanna do that remains to be seen. I'm not super worried about that, nor is anybody else on the front end. The whole goal here isn't to have, you know, bar league softball out there and selling beer. The one upside of selling beer, just to throw it out there, is that's a revenue generator, right? So very clearly, it would be with the expectation at a minimum that's similar to what the rec center uses in that if there's no kids associated with it, kids are not present, you know, that kind of aspect. If that would be possible or plausible.
And I guess, just finally, I'm a, I'm a grass. And I'd like to see, when it comes to injury, grass versus turf, there has to be some other upkeep with that turf, you know, you have to sanitize it, I think, don't you? When you've got the other things on there?
Yeah, so you gotta.
So if we can have an apples, apples comparison, you know, it's more expensive going up front, but what is it yearly? I'd just like to see that.
Yeah, and I got some numbers from.
That's on the side of the grant, but.
Absolutely, I got some numbers from our guy today.
Okay.
Who indicated that, you know, it all depends. Again, it's all about how you take care of the grass or the ball field and blah, blah, blah. But he said it was somewhere on the average of, like for a football field, we're talking now. Baseball, softball's a little different.
Football's a bit more expensive.
But football, he indicated that an annual cost would be probably 10 to 20,000 bucks a year, whereas an annual cost, and that's just maintenance and upkeep. And I shouldn't say upkeep, just maintenance. But if you're talking about an annual cost for a football field with fertilizer and mowing and man hours and doing that, it's about 30 to 40,000. That's what he's telling me. Now, depends again on what you're doing. But we'll get that data for you. You're absolutely correct about potential injuries being more prone on turf. I think some of that levels up though when you have a frozen football field as well, depending upon that circumstance.
Or a muddy football field.
Yep, muddy and slippery without grass.
I've wrecked on many of grass fields that we shouldn't have been putting games on. And then as far as soccer, when you grab soccer and it's raining, you gotta call the game because of player safety, so.
And there's sanitizing and they, you have to replenish those.
Black things that.
Yeah, those, those poly pellets that are in there and then you gotta like sweep it or brush it.
I just, you know, like have a comparison.
Oh, absolutely.
It's gone a long ways, you know, the original turf was basically carpet on top of concrete.
Yes.
And how many knees and elbows and, you know, the grinding across that, it's pretty rough. But now it's, they're pretty soft, you walk across them now, I mean, it feels like a soft carpet.
I wrecked a couple of games up on the Marshfield field. You couldn't really tell that it was turf.
The new generation turf is about as close to natural surface as.
Other than it was pouring rain when I was wrecking and you could tell then because it wasn't, you weren't in water. It was wet, but it wasn't, you weren't in puddles.
Any other questions?
Okay, then we have to get this back to the sign, within 30 days from December 10?
That's correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just had one question, again, awesome project. Why don't you say again, construction would start on this if the fundraising is successful?
Well, we're hoping this spring.
Okay, so you, and the reason I'm asking is you think you could, you would potentially start before the referendum in April?
Well, probably simultaneous with asking the question.
Okay, it's just, it's something that as we start to think, talk about messaging and communicating with the public, we see this a lot of times at school districts, is that there might be other projects going on simultaneously with preparing for the referendum and a community member that doesn't understand that starts to see construction happening. And then they think, oh, they're, why, why do we even need to vote? Because they already started, you know, the project. And again, I'm not saying that that's a deterrent for this, it's just something that we'll have to think about and message that appropriately if it does start before the referendum so that people understand that these are projects that are be funded, most of it's being funded outside of, you know, district dollars and that type of stuff, just so people don't get confused and think that you've, you know, you've jumped the gun.
Well, that's been well discussed internally here because of course, even if you did that two years after the referendum dollars were spent, you still have to have that communication campaign transpire. And I think the uniqueness of this approach, let's pretend that all of these things happen. We ask a bond issue question and it passes. We get this grant and we get the, we meet the fundraising goal and now we're doing, you know, all of this stuff at Lincoln High School. And all of these things are occurring in a simultaneous fashion. That tells me on the front end that our entire communication around the potential referendum question has to start with, what are we asking for and why? And by the way, we're also doing X, Y and Z. That is not tied into district dollars. And that was fully my plan and intention even before knowing we were gonna go to referendum. And frankly, going to referendum helps only insofar as you're going to have built-in outreach to the community. That would be a little bit easier because folks might be interested in being like, "Oh yeah, what's that about?" because that might raise my taxes, right? Or that impacts me as a voter. Whereas if I sent out an email and said, "Hey, come and listen about this awesome grant we got", how many people are gonna come? You know what I mean? And so you're gonna have a built-in opportunity to communicate on all of those avenues and lay that out for people that are willing to listen. And the other piece is, is that, you know, anything that we do, you know, society is as it is right now, you can get information out there and out there and out there and out there and you're still gonna hear people say, "Oh, this is referendum dollars then, we didn't pick," you know what I'm saying? But it still makes all kinds of sense to weave that narrative around what we're doing and why we're doing it. And I think the referendum, if we go that route, which I'm guessing we will in some form, allows for, provides a unique opportunity to address all of that, right? So now, not only can we get the info about the referendum, but it makes all kinds of sense to say, "By the way, we're doing this stuff too", which is at zero cost to taxpayers because it's been fundraised or because we've gotten donations or grants for it. And that's very, very important. And I think the referendum allows that, you know, coalescence to take place, whereas otherwise it'd just be kinda like, well, you do your best to get the word out there and people don't really know, so.
And the last thing I'd like to add is a thanks to Dan Guck and the new grant, because this project, it's new to WRPS, but they've been working on it for six years. Basically since the Raptors came in town because the Raptors kinda displaced the Legion team. And they were involved with Legion and both of them also were involved with the Lincoln baseball program too. So they've done a lot of work before that and this kinda all, kinda came into a perfect storm when Lincoln was starting to look at their project, they saw that and that's how it kinda got together to working with us as far as WRPS, so. They have done a lot of groundwork and they're excited and dedicated and have a group of dedicated people in the community wanting to do this.
Yeah, and I think here in Rapids, it provides a really unique opportunity because A, where we're at. B, we have evidence of these kinds of projects that the school district in particular has been involved in and/or the city, where you see a pretty good success and long-term stability. And C, you can walk around and see state cross-country, state gymnastics and some of the other community-based things we've got going. And there's nobody that can debate that it doesn't bring people to town and spend their dollars here, right? And so to me, it just aligns with a number of things that the community has to offer, number one, the kind of the vibe and the tone of the community in addition to some of these, these opportunities to bring people here. And, you know, location is a big deal. And I know we don't have like a giant four-lane highway interstate that ends, you know, on one end of town or continues from one end of town through the other. But on the same hand, you get a couple of colleges that want a halfway point between, you know, Ways Lacrosse area and even Stevens Point or Green Bay. Boom, right here, we only have to travel each 90 minutes or so and we're there versus three hours for one of them. The WIA has mentioned, well, we'd probably bring things there if you're able to do that. So these are all things that are potential, clearly. And some of those things might take shape immediately, some of those things might take shape over the, a few years. But to me, the community location and the amenities and the aspects of what we already have and what we can have just kinda brings it all together. If it happens, it's gonna be pretty awesome, I'll tell you that.
Well, then I'll go back. Can I now?
Yeah.
Okay.